Okay, for you. We'll get.
It's just four thirty two again.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is four thirty three and today's date is Monday, March the twenty fifth. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, let us never lose hope along the way. Help us to be strong, strong in your desires to be ever mindful of your presence. For it is your strength, love, and the graces you grant upon us that we can go out and share in your love and faith with all those in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Blessing Jesus to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is the disclosure of conflicts of interest for any files, Ms. Anna.
No, ma'am, no files.
No? Okay, thank you. Next item is presentations and the first one is a proclamation by Ms. Garrio, Winter Texan Month.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, good afternoon. With us today, we have Brenda Enriquez from the Chamber of Commerce as well as her staff, and I'm sure a lot of Winter Texans are joining us. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Winter Texans are citizens of other states and countries who spend a portion of the winter months in areas of Texas. Whereas the Rio Grande Valley is a favored destination for Winter Texans. Whereas according to the UT Rio Grande Valley Data and Information Systems Center, Winter Texan visitors and their visiting family members have a total economic impact upon our region of 1.9 billion a year. And whereas Mission, known as the home of the grapefruit and the Mecca of Texas, ranks highest in Texas and sixth amongst the best destinations nationwide for winter visitors from northern states. Whereas according to the Mission Economic Development Corporation, Mission is home to an estimated 50,000 Winter Texans each year. Whereas three-fourths of the vacant housing inventory in Mission is destined for seasonal use, indicative and attractive tourist destination. Whereas Mission is home to forty-seven RV parks, the largest number of all municipalities in the Rio Grande Valley. And whereas Mission is home to beautiful locales that welcome birding and other nation enthusiasts, including Benson Rio Grande Valley State Park, World Birding Center, and the National Butterfly Center. Whereas Winter Texans cite the importance of our climate, our friendly people, and our affordable cost of living among the top reasons they choose to come to Mission. Whereas the annual Winter Texan Fiesta serves as the city of Mission's official welcome to the Winter Texans and is widely attended by Winter Texans from across the Rio Grande Valley. Whereas the citizens of Mission eagerly look forward to welcoming and warmly receiving our Winter Texans each year as valued members of our community. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, proclaim and celebrate March 2024 as Winter Texan Month. Read, considered, and approved this twenty-fifth day of March 2024.
I'll say move.
Second.
There's the motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay.
And I kindly ask our Winter Texan volunteers of a long time to kindly join us up here and be recognized. And we're so thankful to have our Winter Texans come and visit our community. And we love it that they love where we live. And you come here for the, you know, your winter months, and so we couldn't be more grateful. And they have been volunteers of the chamber as well for a long time, over twenty years, and they continue coming. And next year, we hope to do it earlier, the proclamation earlier, so we can have more of our friends here. But we also did it intentionally so you could stay and spend a little bit more money. So, so, so thank you so much. So, thank you so much, Mayor. And I, our Board of Directors is here as well as our amazing team and some of our community members.
Okay, can we get a picture of everyone together?
Absolutely. If the Board of Directors, the team, our team, the hospital CEO, and anybody else that is part of our chamber group would like to join us for this proclamation.
Can I get, I'm sorry. Can I get my daughter to get one?
Yeah, for sure.
Over the winter times. Thank you.
And we have some light refreshments for, you know, for our board and our Winter Texans and anybody who would like to join us right outside the lobby.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a proclamation for our Children's Advocacy Center. That is also Ms. Garrio.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, with us, we have Ms. Tina Martin and Mr. Ricardo Guerrero, Jennifer Suts, Jessica Galloso, and Ms. Pat Blum.
If you'd like to join me over here, that'd be great.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Starr Counties, a nonprofit organization with centers in Mission, Edinburgh, Roma, and Westlaco, was established in the year 2000 with a mission to reduce the emotional trauma of child abuse victims, provide community education about the prevention of child abuse, and to assist in the effective prosecution of those who perpetrate crimes against children. Whereas the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Starr Counties is one of eight-hundred-and-eighty-one children advocacy centers nationwide, one of sixty-eight in Texas, and the first child-focused facility and community-based program of its kind in Hidalgo and Starr Counties. Whereas in FY 2023, the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Starr Counties gave hope, healing, and justice to 2,147 victims of child abuse by providing a safe haven with a child-friendly, non-institutional environment where young victims are not afraid to tell their story. Whereas services include immediate crisis intervention, forensic interviews, forensic exams, family advocacy, mental health services, and community education. Whereas to raise awareness and funds for the organization, the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Starr Counties is having their annual Vinos Wine Extravaganza at the McAllen Convention Center on Saturday, April 6th, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., featuring delicious food, fine wines, and amazing entertainment by premier showband Electric Circus and local favorites, Dr. No. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, support this event to raise funds to support the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Starr Counties in their mission to stop child abuse, one child at a time, and give victims of child abuse the opportunity for a bright future. Proclaim on this twenty-fifth day of March 2024.
May I like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's the motion and a second to approve the proclamation for the Children's Advocacy Center as read. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see the sign. I'll be under three minutes. I am Tina Martin. I am a past president of the Children's Advocacy Center, but I have also been, along with my husband, involved with them for over twenty years. I have lived in Mission for over forty-two years, so please don't start counting and figure out how old I am. My daughter went to school here. The Martin family has been involved in the Citrus Fiesta, including selling sandwiches at the parade. We have given you my daughter as a Duchess, four kings, and two princes on us. So, we're very proud. One other little short note. My husband has been a part of the Dia's Diner Coffee Shop. Trust me, if you don't know, Monday through Friday at 6:30 a.m., you can go and have the problems of Mission solved, the state of Texas, and the world. Seven o'clock on Saturdays. But he is forever. But what I'm most proud of, and I wanted to talk to you about today, is what the City of Mission did for us. Several years ago, the old Amigos de Valle building sat there empty, and with a lot of foresight and gratitude from us, you allowed us to open the Children's Advocacy Center of Mission. For many of you who know, in the valley, transportation is a huge problem. It always has been. And for you to open your hearts and give us that building and let us clean it and remodel it and have all of our forensic interviews and family counseling in there was huge. The families and the children of Alton, Panitas, Palmview, Palmhurst, Mission, and probably as far as Sullivan City, no longer drive to Edinburgh. They come here. The Mission Police Department, instead of having to take their time to go to Edinburgh, can come to our center. So, we are very grateful for that. Last year, we saw, as was in the proclamation, 2,147 children. Of that, 437 were seen at the Mission Center. When you think about that, that is two children, at least a day, that have been either sexually assaulted or abused that are going through that center. We say, hope, healing, justice. And that's what we offer. Hope, because assaults, we hope will stop. Hope, because they are coming to a place where they can speak without being judged. They can be, they can tell their story, and they know somebody will do something about it. Healing, because sexual assault of an adult, of an child abuse, is never forgotten their entire life. But by working with our counselors, by hearing, by being in a safe place, not only the child, but the family are able to learn how to deal with this situation and move on. And I hate to say, my favorite part is justice. Through working with your police department, which we have a wonderful relationship with, and working with the District Attorney's Office, we are able to put predators behind bars. And that is what we want, them off the street and never hurting another child again. So, as the proclamation said, we are having Vinos. It's our major fundraiser. In fact, it's our big, big fundraiser. And we are hoping that you will join us that night. It's a lot of fun, but the money all goes to the advocacy center. Also, I would like to invite you anytime that you would like. It is by appointment, but we'd like you to come by the center and see what we have done and see what our families now are able to have. And so, I thank you very much, and thank you for the center. So, appreciated.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you stay there, we're gonna come down and take a picture with you. You're like an old.
Thank you so much. Thank you, please.
The proclamation. Oh, here we go. Oh, you've got it. There we go. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next item is National Library Week. Proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we're presenting the proclamation for National Library Week, which will be celebrated April the seventh to the thirteenth. Today, we brought you some little presents, some books. And also, next month, we're gonna be celebrating a hundred-and-ten anniversary for the library. So, thank you for always supporting our library, and our proclamation is gonna be presented by our reference librarian, Mr. Williams.
Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through 13th, 2024, to be National Library Week. And encourage all residents to visit the Spear Memorial Library this week and explore what's new at your library. Because of you, libraries lead. Proclaimed on this, the twenty-fifth day of March 2024.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's the motion and a second to approve the proclamation for the National Library Week as read. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Congratulations. And we'll go down for a picture.
Congratulations. And yes, thank you for the books. Thank you so much.
The books that are on your chair, you can take them. Also, we have some snacks outside, popcorn. So, once you leave, if you wanna stop by with us and take some.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is Keep Mission Beautiful Month. Mr. Mandiola. And Ms. Chapa.
Good afternoon, Mayor, the City Council, City Manager. On behalf of the Keep Mission Beautiful, this proclamation is gonna be announced.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Keep Mission Beautiful is a beautification committee formed by the City of Mission City Council on October 24th, 2022. Whereas, the purpose of this committee is to promote public interest in the general improvement of the environment of the City of Mission to initiate, plan, direct, and coordinate programs for litter control and solid waste management for the community on a sustainable basis. And whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful implements and maintains Keep Texas Beautiful's goals and develops plans for improving the overall health, sanitation, safety, and cleanliness of the City of Mission by beautifying streets, alleys, lots, yards, parks, and any other similar places in said city. And whereas, this organization is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community with its beautification efforts. And whereas, the planning and preservation of trees, flowers, plants, and shrubbery are encouraged. And whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful will enhance the qualities of the City of Mission by implementing beautification initiatives and educating and engaging our community on our mission to keep Mission beautiful. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be Keep Mission Beautiful Month. And we encourage all residents to do their part in ensuring that the City of Mission continues to be a beautiful place for everyone to live, work, and play. We also invite the community to volunteer for beautification projects such as Paint Mission Beautiful, which will be taking place on April 6th, and for an educational course on planting greenery and citrus tree planting at the Spear Memorial Library on April 13th. Proclaimed on this twenty-fifth day of March 2024.
May I like to make a motion for approval, looking forward to all those events?
Yes. We're excited.
Yes. I'm sorry, there is a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Keep Mission Beautiful Month. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Great, thank you. Yes, yes, Ms. Mandiola.
Mandiola.
We actually have a, oh, y'all can come up here. It's just two of you, right?
And I. Each one, you don't want the glasses to show.
So, I'm gonna do a little plug for that Mission, Paint Mission Beautiful. That's April 6th, and that starts at what time, Mr. Mandiola?
Starts at eight and one.
And where are you meeting?
Our Jameson. Ten thirty, we got it.
Okay, so, if you have time and you have nothing else to do on this beautiful Saturday morning, please join us, and we'll be, we'll be doing some great things with, with some paint for homes that really are in need. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, the next item is the proclamation for Fair Housing Month and National Community Development Week. Ms. Longoria.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Within here, I have some staff, well, my staff, and a couple of members from our committee, Citizens' Vision Committee, Lenny Garza, and Mijo Villanueva. And my staff, Danny Sanchez, Martha Lopez, and Esther Rivera. Okay, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program, in 1974 to provide- to provide local governments with the financial resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the City of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs. And whereas, the City of Mission, CDBG program, has made a significant impact on our community by funding programs for youth services, health services, services for elderly and disabled, housing assistance programs, economic development, public infrastructure improvements. And whereas, the City of Mission has developed a strong relationship between the city and its residents, primarily those of low and moderate income. And whereas, the month of April, 2024, has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the Community Development Block Grant program. And whereas, the National Fair Housing Law of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas, the principle of fair housing is not only state and national law, but a fundamental human concept and right for all people in the United States. And whereas, the Federal Fair Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and age to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas, the anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, to hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, Fair Housing, the Act in Action, and National Community Development Month, celebrating 50 years of program impact. And further, April 1st through the 5th, 2024, as National Community Development Week. Proclaimed on this, the 25th day of March, 2024.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, the Paint Mission Beautiful will be the initiation of the CDBG as well. We have partnered with Sanitation Department and their Keep Mission Beautiful. And the project is gonna be at 10:30 to 11:00. In fact, this week and last week, we've been prepping the project. And one of our members has volunteered as one of the contractors, one of the local contractors.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And the other one was not able to come in, but he is also a local contractor, Mr. Torres. In addition to that, we will also be having, we partner with Parks and Recreation Department through their Music at the Park event. We will be having our Spring Rally event on April the 12th, where we will be showcasing our projects and inviting local nonprofits and funded agencies that, from CDBG, to provide awareness. We also partner with other departments such as the Library, Health Department, and Police Department, Sanitation, Fire Department. And we're all celebrating and providing some type of awareness. As you all can see, we're the other, the Spring Rally. Okay, so, and everybody's invited. We would love for all of you to, to come by and share that with us. And that'll be from 6:00 to 9:30 on the 12th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go down, go over to the picture.
I do win, good job.
Thank you.
We also provided you some little...
Yeah, proclamation for Jessica's birthday?
That's the next one. Okay, the next item is a report from Rio Grande Valley Humane Society. Jennifer Vazquez.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Vazquez, Director of Development for the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society. I'm here to report on our February numbers. For the month of Febru- February, we had 203 animals come in to our shelter. We adopted out 71, had 32 animals reclaimed, 34 returned to field. Total live outcomes, there were 156. We are performing at a 94.09% save rate. So, we are glad to keep that, that 94% going strong in 2024 and hope to continue. And then, we did have a total of 12 animals that did need to be euthanized for health issues or behavior issues. Foster, we had over, we had 100 animals placed in foster care in the month of February as well. Upcoming April 6th, we have our sixth annual Wine and Whiskers Gala that will be taking place here in Mission for the first time ever at the Mission Event Center at 6:00 PM. We will be honoring our canines in the military and in law enforcement. We also will have the Mission Police Department Honor Guard presenting our flags, as well as hopefully, all of you joining us as our guests this year. We're looking forward to it, and we do still have tables and tickets available if anyone's interested in purchasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a report from our chamber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome to the team, Mike. Glad to have you in Mission. Wonderful things happening in the chamber. We do have a ribbon cutting this, this week, on Thursday, for Little Dreamers Daycare, which we're excited because we love everyone to, you know, to have a place to, to have daycare. So, that'll be happening this Thursday, y'all are welcome to join us. Next Tuesday, we are, on April 2nd, we are hosting a meet and greet of our new Vice President of Membership Development. We're really excited. She is coming, her name is Vanessa Nicole Hernandez. She's coming from the, our friends over at the RGV Partnership. So, so we'll be inviting the membership and any members of the community and prospective members to come in and get to know our new Vice President of Membership. And we do have a new investor of the chamber, and that is Mega Supply. They came on as a chamber investor, so we're really excited to have another chamber investor in the community for the greater Mission Chamber. We do have a groundbreaking happening Tuesday, April 2nd, at 10:30 for the Industrial Park at Alcaldos, and we partnered up with MEDC. And we do have, under our Discover Mission campaign, we have our Spring Market. It's happening on Friday, April 5th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. So, anybody interested in having a booth, please reach out to us. There's a small fee, as we encourage, you know, shop local, eat, and have fun in Mission. And our golf tournament is happening on May 3rd, and we are excited. We actually have a second title sponsor this year, and it's Millennium Copier Machines. And of course, our, our golf sponsor, our golf tournament fundraises some funding for Mission CIZ students in need. In the past, it's been for school supplies, and then now, times have changed, so wherever the gap is at this moment. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, the next item are the departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or concerns?
I want to approve the reports as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Next item is citizens' participation.
Yes, ma'am, we have Ms. Karen Pruitt.
Good afternoon, City Council members, and welcome. Mr. Pettis, City Manager. I'm here because I would like to bring to your attention that some of my concerns absolutely have been addressed. And I would like to thank Jesse Lerma. He talked last time about Mission 311. That really does work, and him and his team are able to get the projects done. So, I wanted to report that the fence in my area has been fixed, and it looks great. And also, we have Ms. De Luna called me on Tuesday and said that there is a town hall set up for Thursday at our clubhouse area. And so, I would invite you, that's Thursday at 4:00 PM. If you are able to attend, I certainly would like that as well. The other thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention is, and, and I don't know what the breakdown is, but I sent messages to Councilwoman Ortega and Councilwoman Plata about the area that had been rezoned by Redline on April 20... At the meeting in April 2021, Redline had said that they would be building one-story houses. And right now, we have two two-story houses in that development. And so, I don't know where the breakdown is, but I do think that it's important that you're aware that they, developers are coming in front of you and giving you one story. And then, when they're actually building houses, they're just building what they would like. And so, I want you to be aware of that and find out, you know, where the breakdown is in, in that system. The first house that went up is off of Scenic Way, which isn't an issue, but the bigger house is right next to the current housing on Lakeview Drive. And so, it has ruined the privacy of at least three, three homes in that, in the current area. So, and that's one of the reasons why I bring that up because we, we like our area as being private that way. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. We're gonna move on to public hearing. Fine as long as recommendations, the first item is a conditional use permit.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Item number 10, it's a conditional use permit for drive-through service window for Doña Dulce Tortillera, located at 1702 East Griffin Parkway, Suite A. This is out of .166 of an acre tract of land being out of and forming a part of Lot 8B, plot of Lot 8A, 8B, and 8C of Stewart Village Phase 1 subdivision, is currently zoned general business. The applicant is Doña Dulce Tortillera, in care of Dulce de Anda. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of Stewart and FM 495 at the Stewart Village Commercial Plaza. The applicant is leasing a 624 square foot suite within the commercial plaza for a tortillera and would like to add a drive-through service window on the north side of the building. Access to the drive-through service window would be off of East Griffin Parkway, making an immediate right turn to the window. Customers will place the order in the window and will be directed to wait into the designated curb-side parking stalls to just pick up and leave. The dumpsters will have to be relocated to allow the use of parking spaces if allowed. Days and hours of operation proposed are Monday to Saturday from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They're proposing six employees for parking. Based on the square footage of the building, there's a total of five parking spaces required. This commercial plaza has the parking, the parking held in common, so it's exceeding code. Staff has sent out 22 notices to property owners within 200 feet radius, and staff has not received any comments in favor against the request. However, staff cannot support this request for the following reasons. One, there is not enough maneuvering space. Two, incoming traffic would be blocked. And three, not enough room for cars to be parked outside the curb stalls. Staff knows that this, staff had considered this request back in August 23 of 2021 by council for a different applicant for the same request, and it was denied. PNC and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anybody online? Alex? No? No?
Mayor, I want to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Mayor, I would like to recommend, to more to approve the recommendation of planning and summoning to deny the request.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to deny the request for the conditional use permit at 1702 East Griffin Parkway. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, the item is denied. Next item.
Item number 11 is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for Taquero Muncho, located at 3501 North Conway Avenue. This would be Suite 15, and this would be out of Lot 2 IHOP subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Taquero Muncho LLC. The council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 1,355 feet north of Mile 2 Road along the west side of Conway Avenue. The applicant is leasing a 2,698 square foot building for the proposed taquería, which will include an outdoor terrace, and would like to add the drive-through service window on the east and west side of the building. Access to the drive-through service windows would be off of Conway Avenue via 24-foot driveway. They would place the order on the east side of the building and pick up the order on the west side. The drive-through windows location allows stacking for up to two vehicles. Days and hours of operation proposed are Sunday to Thursday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I'm sorry, 4:00 AM. They're proposing to have 15 employees in different shifts. For parking, there's a total of 23 tables with four chairs, which totals 92 seating spaces, which would require 31 parking spaces. Staff knows that there's a total of 130 parking spaces that will be shared with other businesses. Staff recommends that proper signage be placed for the drive-through service window in order to avoid any confusion, and that they install a speed, um, speed bump to the, to be located just before exiting vehicles reach the access lane. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation after obtaining the business license. In order to assess the new operation, must comply with all city codes, installation of a speed bump at the end of the ordering window, acquisition of a business license prior to occupancy, and the CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
Mayor, I want to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 11. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Mayor, I want to approve the CUP for the drive-through service window for Taquero Muncho, as with the requirement conditions.
Okay.
Taquero.
There's a motion and a second. And a second, to approve the conditional use permit as, as presented for 3501 North Conway Avenue, Suites 815. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is, that carries an ordinance number 5458. Next item.
Item number 12 is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for Kayala Coffee Company. This is located at 2138 East Griffin Parkway. This would be out of Lot 20, Block 2, Springfield Phase 1 Commercial subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Juan Angel Rivera III. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Helen Avenue in East Griffin Parkway, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant would like to reapply for the conditional use permit to continue using the existing drive-through service window for the coffee shop. The site has an access point off of Helen Avenue. Drive-through customers use the Helen Avenue access in order to utilize the drive-through service window and exit either through the parking lot or Helen Avenue. The location of the window allows, allows, you know, stacking for up to at least three vehicles. The last CUP approved for this location was on December 12, 2022, for a period of one year. Days and hours of operation are Monday to Friday from 6:30 AM to 4:30 PM. It's closed Saturday and Sundays. They currently have three employees for parking. There's a total of 76 existing parking spaces that are held in common. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a three-year renewal to continue to assess the business, continue compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Come forward and please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Juan Angel Rivera with 2138 East Griffin Parkway. So I'm the owner, just in favor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 12. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented for 2138 East Griffin Parkway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero, and that is ordinance number 5459.
What are the hours of operation?
Are Monday to Friday from 6:30 AM to 4:30 PM.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Next item.
Item number 13 is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Villa del Mal Restaurant Number 1, located at 207 East Interstate Highway Number 2. This is out of Lot 3 El Pueblo Phase 2 subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Vega Restaurant Incorporated. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The 4,500 square foot site is located within a commercial plaza approximately 600 feet east of Conway Avenue along the north side of Frontage Road of Interstate Highway 2. Villa del Mat has been in operate, has been in operation and selling alcohol at this location since October of 2010. The applicant would like to reapply for the conditional use permit. The last CUP approved for this location was on December 13, 2021, for a period of two years. Staff knows that this would be the sixth time this request has been considered and approved. Hours of operation are Monday to Sunday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They currently have 15 employees in different shifts. For parking, there's a total of 194 seating spaces, which requires 65 parking spaces. It is noted that the parking is held in common, and there's a total of 225 existing parking spaces. For the sale of alcohol, Section 156-33A of the zoning code requires such uses to be at least 300 feet from the nearest residence, church, school, or publicly owned property. There is a residence within 300-foot radius. However, PNC and council have waived this requirement for a similar business in this plaza. PNC and staff recommended approval for life of use, subject to waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods, continue compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Is there anyone online?
No.
Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 13. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the request with three conditions for the life of use.
Okay. Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented for the life of use. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero, and that is ordinance number 5460.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public hearing.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda for items 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for items number 14, 15, 16, and 17. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to, I'm going to move to the unfinished business, just so that we can get that kind of out of the way. That's okay, Paul? Okay. So items number 28 and 29 and 30, and item number 31, will remain on, on the table until the next, next meeting. And the reason being is that both, well, all four of these items were, we were going to have some meetings with, with the residents involved in these areas, so that's the reason for, for tabling. But I just wanted to let you guys know so that you don't have to wait until the end of the meeting to find out. Okay? So, there's no action? Is that correct? Okay. All right. So we'll move on to item number 18, approvals and authorizations.
Item number 18 is a preliminary, preliminary plat approval for the Leon Samora subdivision. This is a 10-acre tract of land, more or less, out of Lot 34-6 Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Jose A. De Leon and Eric Samora, and the engineer is Urban Infrastructure Group Incorporated. The subdivision is located approximately 2,150 feet north of the intersection of West Mile 3 and SH 107. The developer is proposing 24 multifamily residential lots, two commercial lots, and two detention ponds. CCN belongs to Sherland Water Supply. An internal eight-inch sewer line system will provide sewer service to all the lots as it ties into an existing manhole on the west side of HA 107. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This is not a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for the Leon Samora subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Next item.
Item number 19 is a preliminary plat approval for Mayfair at Trinity. It's a private subdivision. This is a 27.272-acre tract of land out of Lot 15-11, west addition to Sheran, and out of Lots 1 and 4, and all of Lots 2 and 3 out of Rees subdivision. It's currently zoned R1 single-family residential. The developer is Dolcan Development, Inc., and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This subdivision is located on the northeast corner of Bryan and Trinity Street. The developer is proposing 77 single-family residential lots that would have city water and city sewer. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. The developer is requesting two variances. The first variance is to have a five-foot site setback on all internal lots where the city standard is six. And the second variance is that the requesting is, is, the developer is requesting to utilize the following street names: Delwood, Derby, Dulce, Dolores, Drift, and Dolcan Street, instead of the existing names in alignment with the city script. PNC and staff recommended, okay, staff recommended approval to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, payment of park fees, provide water, district exclusion, provide approval of variance number one to have a five-foot internal site setback, and denial of variance two to use suggested street names. However, PNC recommended approval for all the recommendations, including the one for the variance on the suggested street names. This is not a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Mayfair at Trinity. Does this include with the two variances?
For the street and, yes.
And the site setback?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Next item. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. First of all, happy birthday, Mr. Thayer.
Thank you.
We come before you for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the implementation of a sex offender restriction for schools, children-oriented facilities, child-oriented city events, and holidays. The Mission Police Department understands the dangers sex offenders possess in our community, which is why we respectfully implement restrictions for sex offender population. The restriction is for schools, children-oriented facilities, oriented city events, holidays such as Halloween. I did obtain a few city ordinances from, from other cities. Grabbed the one from Brownsville, the one from McAllen, and the one from Edinburgh, along with other cities having such ordinance that we don't have. So I recommend that we get this approved.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as read. I'm sorry, what was the ordinance number on that, Missena?
5461.
5461. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Of the item number 21, again, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between the City of Mission Fire Department and Axon Education Consortium, DBA Texas EMS School for the use of clinical sites. The clinical sites shall provide the Texas EMS School students with practical experience in EMS, base patient activities through the clinical sites and entitles, and the Texas EMS Schools shall provide the student with academic experience. There is no operational cost associated with running this program in-house. There is a student tuition fee of $7,775. This fee, again, includes access to online platform instructors available online and for live skills. Again, to help alleviate the financial burden to municipalities, the Utaul County Office of Emergency Management is willing to fund 50% of the total cost per student. Again, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
I'm so moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the clinical affiliation of the, I'm sorry, in the City of Mission Fire Department and the Axon Education Consortium. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number 22, authorization to award E-Rate program administered by the Universal Services Administrative Co. The city accepted and opened three proposals from the E-Rate program administered by the Universal Services Administration for category two equipment and services, which includes NetSync Network Solutions, JSJ Rodriguez, Inc., DPDA Telepro Communications, and Grupo Telco LLC. The evaluation committee evaluated the three proposals for acceptability, and they were deemed acceptable. Proposals were rated based in the evaluation criteria for five categories. Statement of organization, experience, and performance history, references, key personnel, and cost per proposal. JSJ Rodriguez, Inc. ranked first in the committee evaluation. The staff is seeking authorization to award JSJ Rodriguez, Inc. for a total amount of $81,741.61, which the city is responsible for matching funds in the amount of $14,000. The contract committee is, the contract commitment is contingent upon approval award and acceptable as the E-Rate grant program. For this justification, the lower vendor made a proposal on another brand as allowed by the E-Rate, but did not propose on equal dose than meaning of the specifications. Contingent to U.S. E-Rate review and award, and the discount rate for 85% eligible item. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to award the E-Rate program administered by the Universal Service Administrative Company. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the January 2024 tax collection report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. The acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of January 2024. The 2023 total adjusted tax levies for taxes was $31,927,169.14, and the amount of the collections as of January 31, 2024 is $28,194,729.29, which represents 85.63% of the total 2023 tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for delinquent taxes was $2,346,152.29, and the amount of collections as of January 31, 2024 is $284,396.69, which represents 12.12% of the total tax levies from previous years. Last year, the same month, we had 8.37% for delinquent tax collection. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to approve, but I just, you say last year, so it went from 8.39% to 12.12%?
8.37%.
So we are collecting more delinquent taxes?
Yes.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the January 2024 tax collection report as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Next item, the January 24 financial statements.
Total revenues for the month were $18,626,94, and total expenditures were $11,508,475, leaving total fund balance at $35,518,584. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
All right. Any questions or a motion?
You'll notice if you look at the report, the solid waste, we're 33% into the budget, and solid waste revenues are at 26%. You know, you see expenditures at 33, where it should be. More than likely, what difference there is, you know, cycles, and there's probably one cycle that's missing. But overall, the financials are recommending to accept and file, not to approve. I would recommend that you accept the report and file it. Thank you.
Accept and file. Okay.
I'm going to.
To accept and file.
To accept and file the reports as presented, our city manager.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to accept and file the financial statements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I have before you item number 25, which is the authorization for the purchase and installation of port and place safe fall material via state-approved buyboard vendor. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase and install the port and place safe fall material from Exter Play, which is the approved state board, state board vendor number 679-22. This is for Lyons Park. This is at a cost of $282,591.27. This is funded in part from a $1.5 million grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife at a 50/50% match. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a sec, and a second to authorize a purchase and installation of port and place safe fall material via state-approved buyboard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
What's the, the, the date that's going to be?
They're still looking at completion for June.
June? Okay. That's what I was.
There's lots of people and lots of activity out there. I'd like to be able to do a walk there with y'all.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Judge.
Here comes the judge.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Pettis. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I come before you today seeking, on behalf of the Mission Municipal Court, requesting a resolution to establish a temporary amnesty program during the entire month of April 2024. The purpose of the program is to provide people with The purpose of the program is to provide people with active city emission warrants, the opportunity to resolve the charges, and to do so without fear of arrest, giving them an excellent opportunity for people to come in and save some money by having their warrant fees and failure to appear charges dismissed when payment is made in full. So I seek y'all's approval of a resolution today.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number eighteen ninety-nine, adopting the guidelines for municipal court amnesty program during the month of April. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. If I may, Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
So payments can be made from eight to four forty-five on Monday through Friday. And I do want to encourage everybody that our court is a safe haven for those that do come in voluntarily on behalf of their tickets. So even if they are not in a financial position to take care of the amnesty offering, of the waiving of the fines, the failure to appear, and the warrant fees, they can still come in and seek other type of payment arrangements, such as payment plans, community service, or finding of vengeance. So I do want to encourage even those that don't necessarily qualify under the program, they still should take advantage to come in without fear of being arrested. And that's every day that we have that safe haven. If people come in voluntarily, we accommodate to see how we can best fit where they're at financially. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let you do it after eight-thirty. Anybody that works? Let you do it after eight-five-thirty, anybody that works?
We can ask him to do that, yeah. Okay, next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item twenty-seven, authorization to a water allocation supply contract between the City of Mission and United Irrigation District. The amount of water allocation the district agrees to supply the city here under its three-thousand-acre feet of municipal use priority water allocation on a calendar-year basis beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four, and each calendar year thereafter during the term of the contract. Water shall be delivered to the city from the first lift main irrigation canal, currently owned by the district for diversion, or at second delivery point of the district's main canal along Los Zebanos Road, or at substitute to other delivery points agreed upon by the parties. The city shall pay to the district on a monthly basis eighty dollars per acre foot delivered plus conveyance losses for the supply of the water allocation. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second to enter into a agreement with the water allocation supply contract between the City of Mission and the United Irrigation District. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Can you let the council know what's our loss?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent?
Yes.
So we're buying three thousand, but we only get eighty-five percent of that that gets delivered to us?
Correct, yes, at a one-point-three-three conversion.
Thank you.
And if we were further away from the river, it would be more, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, you're too of operation.
Just so you know where the fifteen percent comes from.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Routine Matters. City Manager?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Okay.
No, ma'am.
All right, City Council comments, Ms. Jessica?
Of course, today I do have comments.
Today? Oh, my goodness.
Every day, every meeting. I like this part of our meeting. So today, I'd like to just say a little something. I've been off of Facebook for about five years now, I think, but I enjoy my time to time on Instagram. And so I heard this over the weekend. I just thought I'd share it. So it can make maybe somebody's day here today. So to everything in our life, there is an opposite. Whatever you are going through, there is always an opposite of the feelings that we have. Whatever you do, we must push through it. Push to get the opposite of fear, hurt, anger, and disappointment. I have chosen to refuse all of this and be everything and anything but happy. Push to be resilient. My prayer for everyone here today is that everyone get there. And of course, on this extra special day, if you can be anything at all in this world, be kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to thank, I think we have a very good workshop this past Friday at the island. I was not giving up for Dean. I know they showed me a Chorizo taco in the morning, but I didn't eat it because I had my own breakfast. Tacos for lunch, but we really had something that I think it will be very beneficial for the city. Once again, I was, there was no expense to the city as far as luggage. We use our own vehicles. I am so blessed to use some of my funds to get some things done for the city. And I really thank God for giving me that opportunity that I consider myself, that I devote a lot of my time, my talents, and my finances to them, to helping whatever I can the citizens' mission. So, and I can see that our colleagues, we are so blessed and dedicated to serve our community. So, thank you. Mike, welcome.
Thank you.
You got a, you know, you get what you pay for, and I feel like we made a good investment, and we're gonna work hard to make the City of Mission a better place to live. And my God continue giving us wisdom to make the right decisions.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in first. I just want to add to your comments, Mr. Plata, that there was some of us that did stay the night before, but we all, that was at our own expense. So again, I want to thank everyone because we were all there, and it was a great workshop. We got a lot done. Our assistant city managers were there. It was a, it was a great opportunity to discuss our future, and I think we have a very bright future in the City of Mission. Again, thank you, Mr. Pettis. You facilitated a great workshop, and we look forward to getting things done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say happy birthday to Ms. Jessica.
Thank you.
And reiterate what Sardman said. Thank you for a wonderful workshop. I think it was very productive. And also, we had a fantastic trash bash on Saturday. We had, thank you to the community for coming out. We picked up a lot of trash. We cleaned up Mission. It was a great event. It was so wonderful to see so many people participate, so thank you.
Happy birthday, Jessica, and welcome to the team, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Happy birthday, Jessica. I forgot to tell you.
It's okay. We've been celebrating since Friday.
Mine is next week.
It's not either?
No.
I know your birthday's in December. All right, the next item is Executive Session. Is there a motion?
I'm going to go into Executive Sessions.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into Executive Session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one point zero-seven-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Is there a motion to go to reconvene?
I so move.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.